Are we, are we online?
You ready Jeff?
Yeah, ready.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
We'll now be recorded.
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening to the July nineteenth City Council meeting. Would you please stand and join me for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Ballinger.
Here.
Councilmember Kramik is absent excused. Uh, councilmember Swift is absent excused. Mayor Pro Tim Leggero.
Here.
And Mayor Alves.
Here, okay. Looks like we're gonna move right into a consent calendar. Uh, is there anyone on the council that would like to remove anything off the calendar? I would like to discuss number five a little more before we sign off on that.
Okay.
Uh, so why don't we do start with that? And then we can go back and vote on everything else, or do we do it the other way around?
We vote on everything else, but.
Right, vote on everything else and then go to number five and then you do that.
I will accept the motion for the first item, four items on the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar excluding item five.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, we also have to let the public have their minute or a brief moment in order to pull consent calendar.
Okay, let's do that now. Uh, public, is anyone in the audience interested in removing any of the consent calendar items for discussion? And seeing no one rushing down, we're gonna move on back to our council again, gentlemen.
Uh, make a motion to approve the consent calendar, absent item five for further discussion.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three oh. Okay, let's move down to number five. The reason I pulled number five is I noticed in number five, we've added two new positions. Am I correct?
Correct.
And the reason I bring that up is not so much the new positions, is the fact that, you know, I never truly ever feel comfortable in the analysis. I never really truly feel like we know where the money comes from every time for all these increases and stuff. And the next time we go through one of these, I'd like to have a little more thorough transparency, uh, where we can truly understand how the system works in terms of these pays for our individuals and our, on our staff. Well, and my point being this is that everything that goes up has to be paid for some way or another. And my question is, what mechanisms are we using to pay for those? Now, I know in larger cities, or cities at once were small, they grow and they grow and they grow and they offset those costs, but there's never really a remedy. It's just a perpetuation of the same old thing over and over again. So, what I wanna know, and I wanna identify as other sources possibly, other than the same thing everyone around us does, which is grow and grow and grow. I would like to find a way that we could look at some options to generate revenue without the consequences of ruining our community by growing and growing and growing. Because I look around this valley and I look at the towns that used to be small and I look at the bigger ones have gotten bigger. And you know what? I can't really get on board with any of that. I don't think that's what we wanna be. So, if it is, it is, but if it isn't, I think we owe it to ourselves to give an opportunity to look at this and try to be a little more analytical and see if there's options. And that's really all I have to say, but I just wanted to say it because I don't think it's been said enough. I just think there's, it's a shame to see the perpetuation of the same thing over and over again with the same results and no one ever saying, whoa, that's it? Okay, I'll accept that motion now for that last item.
Um, move to approve item five of the consent calendar.
I'll accept the second.
Second.
We have a motion, second, all is in favor? Motion carries.
Aye.
Motion carries. Got a little ahead of myself. Okay. All right, let's see here, we next, we're gonna move into staff communications.
So, mayor and council, um, included in your agenda packet were our monthly reports that include the treasures report, police department, animal control, recreation, development services, building, public works, water department, wastewater and our project report. And staff is available to answer any questions that you may have on those items.
Council.
Uh, didn't Biden come out, President Biden come out and say that, uh, some of the COVID relief money might be available to hire law enforcement officers?
I have not heard that or gotten any confirmation on that one.
There was a reversal of the defund the police and it's moving into a fund the police. And, uh, it sounded like that was one of the potential changes to the limitations on using the money. So, I don't know if it was, uh, you know, it was a briefing he was giving on it, but it sounded like there may be some movement that way. So, if there is money out there for another officer or grant money like we've gotten in the past for a position, that might be something worth looking at.
Okay.
Or fixed assets we may need for the police department as well, if that's allowed. It's not just people, but equipment as well. I know we have aging car fleets that could be definitely improved upon and some other items, I'm sure Chief's got a list, it's on his desk somewhere.
Was this somewhere in the news? Uh, was this a newspaper item, a new cast?
Yeah, he, he was talking about the.
How long ago?
Money, uh, probably two weeks ago now.
All right. We had to look that up and see what he really, really did. What, uh, medium did you see it on?
Hmm, one of the, uh, one of the networks.
One of the locals.
Like Channel Three or somebody like that?
Yeah.
Cause you can go back and search that.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I'll do. All right, yeah, it'd be good if we could pick up some donate, some money from the government instead of giving it away to them.
And we'll see how the infrastructure package comes out too, cause that certainly.
Well, they're still the big hand, aren't they?
Projects, yeah, yeah, but there's certainly some projects that if they're gonna hand out that kinda money that they're talking, there's some projects that would be top of the list around here, so.
Sure.
Good idea, all right. Now, we're gonna go to the, the.
Um, we have a couple, I have a couple other staff items.
Okay.
Communications, uh, just an update, we did meet with Jilton today. They are prepared to come back to the council on August second, um, with some proposed rate increases and, um, contract amendments. Uh, so they will be at our August second meeting. Um, and then, uh, I just wanted to, I, I know the council was sent an email about National Night Out is August third. So, right now, we have six stops, um, we're gonna go up to eight stops, um, just because of time and we will be using our transit bus. Uh, if you plan to attend, just, uh, let myself or Sarah know if you haven't already. Um, w- last week I found, I had got some information from the county regarding, it's called a RAD card program. And the county approved a million dollars to, um, match funds for people wanting to use monies at smaller businesses within San Joaquin County. Um, the businesses have to register for this card program and they'll match up to a hundred dollars in a community. Um, so I sent out an email to our, no businesses in Escalon have registered for it at this time. Um, so I did send out an email to all businesses that I have email addresses on file through our business license, uh, last Thursday. Um, and trying to get word out for the program. And then I also talked with Pat Brown, um, with the chamber about this because it is a good way. So, if I went on there and I said I wanted to spend fifty dollars in Escalon community at businesses that had registered, I would actually get a hundred dollars. So, it doubles our money, puts more money back into the businesses in town, so.
Uh, they, uh, they implemented that in Stanislaus County.
Right.
And just talking to some of the business owners over there, particularly the restaurants downtown, it kept business going. It got people into their businesses to spend money and it, it was exactly that. You put a hundred on the card, they would match it with a hundred and so you've got, for a hundred bucks, you got two hundred dollars to spend.
Right.
And, uh, that, it was an overwhelming success there. And there's been, I think they either are considering re, uh, establishing that if they can put more money back on the card, or, uh, it's already been approved, but it was a, it was very successful, so.
Yeah, and so, uh, San Joaquin County has piggybacked, it's the same applica, it's the same, uh, phone app that you, was used in Stanislaus County. You just choose which community, um, you wanna use it in on there, so, um, but hopefully, um, we can get some of our businesses registered on there, so we can get some money back in our community there.
Uh, it's, I highly recommend it, it was, it was very successful there, so.
Is there a financial cost for businesses to register?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So, it's just time?
Yeah, yeah, just, just registering it and then when the customers come in through the application, you show a QR code and they scan the QR code and then the county sends the money to them.
Interesting.
So. And then, um, the only, I, uh, forwarded an email and just to remind the council, there is a, an update for our Sustainable Groundwater Management, um, Agency that's being held this Thursday in Ripon at the Ripon City Council Chambers from one thirty to three thirty. Um, and this is, uh, being presented by Ripon Escalon South San Joaquin Irrigation District. It's our South San Joaquin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Um, so just, I shared that with you guys, um, on there. If you know anybody's.
There's a Zoom link.
There is a Zoom link for it now, yes, mm-hmm, yeah, so, um. And that's all I have, Dominique, did you have?
Um, I had a few different items. Um, the first one was that that request for qualifications for the senior housing project is out. Um, we did register it through the software that we use, which is called Public Purchase. Um, and it does allow us to, um, pull up reports and find out what companies are looking at us. Um, and, and as of this afternoon, ninety-six companies had accessed the information and seventy-one of them have downloaded the RFQ. Um, so we've got potentially seventy companies just in this last week that are reviewing it, uh, to take a look. Um, the deadline, I believe, is September twelfth. I know we kind of moved that around, but it's mid-September is when it's closing. We're trying to give them enough time, uh, to be able to get all their documents together. We have been fielding questions, um, on things that have come in right away, um, so that's a good sign as well. Um, and then we did have one of the developers that we've been discussing, uh, potential senior housing with, uh, over the last several months, um, wants to provide a tour, uh, to the council and anybody who was, who was interested to kind of show how and what, what they build. Um, and they are doing a project in unincorporated Escalon and they were wanting to know if any council members would be interested in a tour on August fifth at nine AM. Um, so if you are interested, uh, please let me know, um, and we can move forward with confirming that with them.
Who's the organization?
Um, the, the organization is, uh, Pinnacle, Pinnacle Corporation.
Okay, and where are they from?
Um, the, I think the main office is out of, I wanna say Stockton. Um, but the main owner, I believe, is, is, lives in Elk Grove, but is, is born and raised here locally, not in Escalon, but, but in the Central Valley.
Okay, do you know their owner's name?
Uh, the owner of the company is, is Chris Rivas. And that's who we've been, uh, talking with.
All right.
And then I printed that public comment that we got for the.
Yeah, uh, matters presented from the audience.
Oh, that's when you're gonna do it, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
That's right, public comment.
Um, I've got something, when looking at the wastewater treatment plant report, um, just started me thinking again of the, uh, project coming in, I mean, with, uh, options for upgrades at the plant. Um, wondering if I can get some city time to look into some numbers for us for the last few years possibly, as far as total fleet fees that we've collected, again, and I'm assuming because it's one of those funds that what we receive is what we expense to run that sewer plant. But also, um, numbers like the average gallons that are processed at the plant on an annual basis. How many of, how much of that is coming from Eckert and Premier individually? Um, also what's being collected from those two plants as well as everybody else? Just kinda break it down, um, any other revenue that might be coming from Eckert and Premier in relationship to the city? Just trying to figure out as we look at the projects going forward, um, one of the considerations I've got is that if we go into debt and we decide we're gonna do X on that plant and spend a lot of money, if one of those facilities decides to pull the plug and walk away from this city as a business, what's that impact gonna be for the rest of the repayers that we're gonna have to pick up the slack for? So, I'm trying to get a kinda ballpark figure of that impact on how much percentage of the plant they're using on an annual basis, how it impacts maybe during the season when they're processing during that and, and kinda get a feel for what is really the impact that they've got on us. And then if something happens, we can kinda manage that expectation if something happened there.
Okay.
So, if that's agreeable to everybody else, I'm not looking for it tomorrow, just as we work into that point where we get closer to that point.
We just got responses from engineering firms today was the final deadline, so.
Okay.
Haven't reviewed them at all at this point, but, yeah.
Something as, as you come across some numbers and you're looking, jot some things down and slowly working on it, so it's not just a, gotta have a fire now kinda request if you can work it in here and there.
Before we move forward on any of that, I think we are gonna have meetings with the industries.
Right.
And we're gonna try to get some sort of an idea of what we're doing, dealing with in terms of longevity.
Right.
And I think that'll help us too. Uh, though I like your idea, I think it's a great idea.
To make sure that, you know.
Well, it's good to know.
We thought Tri Valley was gonna pull the plug and go belly up and look what happened.
Absolutely.
You know, if we were planning on that percentage and that revenue and that goes away, how's that infect every one of us in the city?
It's not gonna be pretty.
Yeah, so I just wanna make sure that, that's a consideration when we get to that point.
Very good. Is that it?
That's all I had on the, on the staff communication there, yeah.
All good. Okay, is there anyone in the audience wanting to comment on this?
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, just to let council know, uh, we're six or seven months out from stop data reporting, I'm sure you're aware of. Um, IT's been working with me, we're getting it set up, we're getting it squared away. I plan on starting.
Clarify what stop data reporting is.
Oh, stop data, the RIPA for the AB, uh, assembly bill that came out, for any stop we have to record, proceed or perceptive race, gender, religion. There are several other categories that you can't ask questions about, but they wanna collect the data on who we're stopping, why we're stopping them and how that's going, so it, collection for political reasons, I'm sure. Anyways, we're, we're set up to start it. We go live in January, but I plan on starting in September, so we can work the bugs out of it. Right now, I did run into one thing, there's a firewall between us and the sheriff's office that's holding us back and IT is on it. And then the rest of my department is gearing up for Park.
Who is men, who is mandating this?
Uh, this is, this, this is coming from the Attorney General's office, it's to an assembly bill, the state assembly wants it.
Have they given us any funding for it?
No. No, there's no fund.
You know what, that's garbage.
You're funny, Ed.
I just think, I just think it comes a point, you just say no. I just think we have to start saying no. They're draining our resources and it's crazy. I don't know why we put up with it.
Um, and as far as vehicles, I know you brought up vehicles, the one we ordered that Timmy helped me get set up going, uh, we ordered last budget, I'm still waiting on because if you've noticed the inventory in the lot over there, um, I was also told that Ford does not make police vehicles unless you order them, so it's kinda like Burger King, we ain't making it until you order it.
Interesting.
I'm still waiting. Just so you know.
So, have you ordered it?
Oh, no, it's been ordered, it got ordered four or five months ago, but not to the fault, but they can't seem to get it. It's still out. One of the explorers. Uh, David over there tries to track it for me, he can't really find it.
That's an Explorer, right? One of the explorers, not an F-150.
No, that, that didn't quite pan out. I, I tried, I looked at it.
A new Bronco?
You guys are funny. Money wasn't there and what I looked into, not really worth leasing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think leasing's a good idea.
Well, the first thing out of it is the vehicles that are disqualified, they don't call it law enforcement, they call it safety vehicle, then they list fire and ambulance, but, um, police fall into that, so we can't do it that way. But they did explore it, thank you for the tip.
All righty, is that it?
That's about it.
Excellent. Is there anyone in the audience has any comment on the, uh, staff communication? All right, seeing no comment, we're gonna move on to manage presented from the audience. The public may address the city council, you know, on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. Determination of whether an item is within the authority of the city council is discretionary decision by the mayor. All right, is there anyone?
Mayor, before we open it to the audience, we did have a submittal for a public comment.
Okay.
Uh, dear city council, on behalf of the San Joaquin County Democratic Central Committee, we write this letter to call for action on our state's current drought. Droughts cause higher water costs, severe shortages, fatal wildfires and toxic contamination, problems that especially harm working class families. Additionally, agriculture has always been the backbone of our economy, but San Joaquin Valley is drying up and even sinking because of weakening aquifers. Our local farmers already work tirelessly to compete in the global econo, economy. They deserve water conservation policies that support their needs. Therefore, we ask the city council to establish an environmental commission that will help Escalon implement currently existing sustainability policies as well as to develop new ones. Such a commission should include a diverse panel of local activists and experts who can deeply discuss matters of science and common sense. Moreover, Escalon should formally recognize the severity of our drought and promote conservation habits. Tracy has already taken these steps, that, these necessary first steps. The city can start working with local environmental groups such as Restore, the Delta and Sierra Club, gathering their input on how to address the dry weather conditions. The city can also update any outdated water ordinances to properly address the threat of climate change. Protecting our water and with it, our community and economy requires leadership from the local level upwards. The San Joaquin County Democratic Central Committee requests that Es- Escalon take sensible steps for our present and our future. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, at this point, do we ask for comment on that or we just roll back into what we're doing?
It's just public comment.
That is public comment.
Yeah.
We're done.
Submitted by email.
Yeah.
Perfect. On to the next person.
Is there anyone else in the audience this evening who'd like to come up and speak about any item on the agenda or off it? Uh, just give us your name, please.
Hi, my name is Andreon Shear and, um, I've been, I have a dance studio here in town. I've been in business since two thousand and eleven. I've been located at fourteen zero five First Street, uh, for eight years and I love my landlords, I love the location. Um, unfortunately, parking has been an issue. Um, I technically have three allowed parking spots surrounding my building and, um, I'm here today to ask for help. Um, I've, I have two dance rooms that comfortably hold eight to ten dancers per room. Classes last fifty-five minutes to allow traffic in and out of the building to, to flow smoothly. Um, that could be roughly about sixteen cars, not including my staff members, um, every hour looking, um, s- s- sorry, looking to park while, you know, they're dropping off or observing a class. So, um, my classes are mainly held between two-thirty and eight-thirty in the evening and my morning classes are usually between eight-fifteen to noon, a couple days out of the week. Over the years, we've managed to make it work with most neighbors. Um, there are three houses on that street out of four that do not have driveways. And if, um, any issues ha- have occurred in the past, you know, a police report has been made either against me, um, or I have called before and, um, the neighbors have entered my business and asked to move vehicles that are in front of their houses and the pasture across the street has also done the same thing. With only three parking spots surrounding my building, I'm sure you can imagine how difficult it is for my clients to find parking near the premises. I've been interrupted way too many times. Being stopped in the middle of my class creates frustration. Having to leave a class of eight three-year-olds to find out whose car's parked and whose spot and having to come back and find out, you know, which one of my clients is taking their spot and then apologizing and making them move is just, um, has become an inconvenience. I send monthly newsletters to my clients where I can explain myself thoroughly and ask them to be mindful of the neighbors and parking, but there's only so much I can do. In the past, I've let parents park diagonally on Center Street towards my building, which would gain at least two or three more parking spots in doing so. Soon, we found notes on our cars from neighbors with our license plates, numbers written down on them and that they've made a report. Next, I told my staff that they can park in the alleyway as we saw the neighbors do it as well. Again, that would save me at least three parking spots in doing so. Just recently, this became an issue with the neighbors as the alley is claimed by them and we would no longer be allowed to park there. Just recently, we all soon found out that no one's allowed to park in the alleyway. I have respected that rule since that came about, however, there are still cars there parked daily, one of which is parked there permanently on the side. Last week, I received a letter in the mail from the city of Escalon notifying surrounding businesses of extra parking called the Prospect Area where the mer- Last week, I received a letter in the mail from the city of Escalon notifying surrounding businesses of extra parking called the Prospect area, where the mer- the merchant yard is located. And I will gladly gladly notify my parents of this extra parking, however, I'm the farthest away from that parking lot. My staff isn't able to park there as they teach longer than two hours at a time and passes seven P M., which is two restrictions for that parking lot. Most parents will not park that far, especially when they have young ones, um, to worry about as far as, you know, walking from and to. I stand before you today to ask for help. These last few months have gotten worse. We have been threatened, yelled at and profanity, profanity has been used towards minors. I've made reports with the police, however, much of my time is spent explaining and standing up for myself. Um, as far as a solution, I would like to ask permission to park diagonally to allow more parking parking spots for my clients. I would like to also suggest possibly cutting down those two trees that I believe belong to the city. Um, those trees are hard to maintain, I've spent a lot of my time and some of my money keeping those trees maintained and I wouldn't mind seeing them go. But the best and only solution, I feel, is to put a parking lot in between, um, on the corner of First and McHenry. A public parking for all clients, including mine and, um, for everyone who goes to downtown events or the Portuguese Hall or the church across the street. I mean, this parking lot, I'm assuming will get used quite a bit. So I I ask, stand before you today to, you know, think thoroughly about what you can do to help me. As much as we all understand it's first come, first served parking, we are still being asked to move constantly. We are not able to park in front of the church anytime at all on Wednesdays and certain neighbors on any weekday. If the Portuguese Hall has an event, cars get congested and chaotic. And now with the cement wall separating the merchant yard and the Escalon transmission, parking is near impossible. Please consider coming up with a solution for the parking congestion. My next season starts in August and before COVID, I easily had two hundred and thirty clients attending weekly. With the addition of new businesses and the frustrated neighbors, I strongly feel something needs to be done. Thank you.
Gentlemen?
I don't know that we can comment about it, but we certainly can talk to staff and direct staff to take a look at that area and see what our options are, maybe come back to us with some thoughts on it.
I mean, the biggest thing is gonna be funding to be able to develop a parking lot.
Yeah, that, the, uh.
Or purchase land.
Did that, um, did the corner lot ever sell?
Not that, not that we're aware of.
Still up for sale and that's actually two parcels there, right?
I believe it's two, that's what I'd heard.
So, okay. Alright, so certainly take a look at it. You know, we can't, because it's not on the agenda, we can't, you know, sit here and have a conversation with you about it. But you brought the issue to us, so now we can have staff take a look at it, see what the options are, maybe contact you, follow up with you, get some ideas and then we've got to take it from there and see what options are available to us, okay? Yeah, thanks for coming down letting us know though. It's been a constant problem down there.
Yep.
Uh, yes, Mr. Tilbury, come up here, please. Just give us your name.
I've experienced that parking problem, if I understand it.
Hello, uh, thanks. Uh, short notice, Warren Tilbury. I'm a property owner in that core area that Andreon was talking about. And, um, historically, I I guess i- in particular, I'm just concerned about the parking restrictions on the previous city-owned property that was somehow transferred to the merchant place. Uh, so there was a negotiation by the city somehow that transferred that along with the portion of the alleyway. And it seems that during the course of that, uh, well, early on in the course of that whole development, um, planning stages, it was intended, they were gonna improve that parking area for city parking, public parking. Was, that's the way it was sent to me, so I thought that was pretty good and what they've done there is spectacular, really. I think it's good for the community and it's creating some, uh, some momentum in, on that side of the tracks, which I think is gonna be good for the town. Uh, the restrictions, two-hour restriction there, uh, I'm not sure where that came from or if it was negotiated in the sale of the property. I'd like, in fact, if, is this negotiation of the properties, the sale of the property, uh, public record? Can we get hold of that? Can that be?
Yes, it was at a public meeting, the contract was in a public meeting and I looked it up and now I'm drawing a blank on the date, I apologize.
So what I'd be interested in is, was the two-hour limited parking?
It wasn't spelled out in the, in the cell contract.
So, so somehow that came about after the fact, apparently.
It's, it's, it, yeah, it, there is a, there's some verbiage in there about parking arrangements.
Okay. Well, if they were really good, they had the two-hour limited parking, authorized vehicles only, and then it's probably a done deal. But if they didn't, then it seems like they don't have a, really an opportunity to call out parking restrictions that way, even though they own the property. So that's one issue. I mean, if they cut the signs down, took the signs down, the rest of the community could use that parking as they need it. That, that's all I'm looking for, to follow through with what was originally presented as a public, city public parking. As it is right now, there's a tenant there, I think at H-two, and they park there all day long, their employees. So they, they should be moving their car, not just using it for employee parking. The, the other thing is kind of un, sort of related, but according to the, they call, refer, reference this Prospect. But Prospect actually is the east side of the property. Did that right away get canceled out?
Yeah, it got transferred.
Okay, okay. And the other issue, I guess, was the alleyway, which now is blocked off, so it's just a dead-end alley for coming off Center Street. Uh, and just talking to one of the, uh, tenants in that neighborhood, it just seems like, uh, that, that he can't use it, it's gotta be, the city won't allow that to be. I mean, what's the good of that alleyway, I guess?
We have utilities in the alleyway is the reason why we won't release any kind of ownership.
Uh, subgrade drainage and such, I guess?
Utility lines, sewer lines.
Okay. Uh, okay. Well, again, I guess all I'd like to see is the conditions that were, uh, in the sale of the properties that, and the, I guess the other thing you're concerned about buying, maybe looking at another piece of property for additional city parking. There, there are a couple vacant lots on the corner. Personally, I don't know that those are the good spots, those are pretty primo spots that somebody's gonna wanna do something with. But, uh, whatever revenue the city got from the sale of these two lots, I know it goes in the general fund, but it's, should be available to fix the parking situation or at least alleviate it a little bit. I mean, you must've got something out of that deal.
It was minimal. It was because it would, they were developing the parking lot.
Okay. But that's, was the idea was for city public parking.
Right.
The benefit was that we get as community is the parking. But now it's so restricted, it doesn't, somebody's, we kind of lost out on an opportunity. And, and I think it's great that you sold it to the guy and, and he's got, been able to use it, utilize it in his development plan. But for him to put the signs up, it's doesn't seem right. That's all I have.
Uh, how many, uh, spots are allocated for the city to park there?
Well, there's sixteen, I think it's sixteen public parking spaces there.
Okay, now, my next question is, those who rent those units from him, are they entitled to that parking as in addition to their rental?
Well, the, the parking is, is limited at a two-hour parking. There were eight spots that the, those businesses could count as their parking spaces.
There's not sixteen, then there's actually what?
No, well, no, because any customer could use them, so it did, they're not, they're not restricted to only those businesses.
The businesses are most commonly there to use them. There are eight businesses or eight spaces and what, there's six or five businesses there that had been rented out?
No, I think there's only three in the one unit that's closest.
Oh, I thought.
There's three in that building, I think, yeah, I just went by that.
And if they each had one or two cars, that's six right there and they, they come and go.
Yeah.
So you're really down to about ten spaces. Okay, I'm just trying to figure out what's going on. One, one thing I want, when you're finished, Mr. Tilbury.
I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, one thing too is, uh, our problem is logistics more than parking. We have parking in Escalon everywhere. The problem is where it's located versus where they need it. One consideration might be, we look into a trolley that can transport from parking lots. So something to think about. You can bounce around that, Oakdale does that. Alright.
During special events?
Well, I was thinking if we have a situation where we have businesses in town that don't have parking at it that's adequate, maybe we should look into something that would solve that problem and maybe that's one issue. And I know there's funding like everything, but there's funding in buying property too and there's funding in paving and there's funding in maintaining. So you have to weigh the two, which is the less evil. I mean, we gotta resolve an issue somewhere or another. I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but it's an option to consider.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the audience this evening who'd like to speak on any items? Alright, Mr. Haskin.
Um, Gary Haskin, uh, I don't know if anybody's aware of the S B nine and S B ten. What the legislature in California is trying to do is allow developers to build up to six or eight units on a single-family lot. And then the developers will pay no fees. Uh, it can't restrict it. Wh- did, one of the most important tools the city has is their ability to zone. That controls the nature of their, their city, uh, just the general feel of the city. Well, I think it was a couple of months ago, a couple, maybe a year ago, they, uh, passed that one bill. Uh, yeah, you have to refresh my memory on that one. I'm sorry, the one that they, they passed, uh, already?
For what, for what, in reference to what?
Oh, the second unit, yeah.
Accelerate, accessory dwelling units.
Now, I think S B nine and ten are both bad by themselves,
but the fact that the legislature is trying to take control of the city by controlling its zoning is, is a serious issue.
It's an overreach.
Uh, so I think maybe, uh, a letter to our representative, uh, something might be called for, uh, just to tell them that they're treading in, in the city's area.
The League of Cities is opposing it and they've, they've tried to get people on board. So what we can also do is join that, uh, contingency of those cities that are agreeing with the League of Cities in opposition to it. So what we can do is call our representative, which I can't think of his name right now, but.
Stephen Walls.
Stephen Walls and submit a letter and maybe that will help.
Okay, like I said, you, it really should be front and foremost, because it's extremely important to the city government.
Oh, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, at this point, I would like staff to send that letter. Do I need to do any formal requests or how can we deal with that?
I want to say we've probably sent that letter before, um, when it was only four units, I hadn't heard about it exceeding to six or eight. Um, I know that we definitely sent a, a letter early on, um, so they typically put it out for certain periods of time to do that letter and we can definitely catch up and, and make sure we get another one out if they ask for it.
Uh, I think we should send another one.
Yeah, okay.
And I'd like to see a copy of the first one, please.
Okay.
Alright, very good. Is there any more comment on this item? Alright, anyone out there in the audience would like any more comment? If not?
Oh, I was gonna say, there's nobody online, so.
Okay, um, yeah, I've lost that one a long time ago. Anyway, um, so there isn't, we're gonna move on to the next item and it looks like to me we're down here at the public hearing, which we have none, administrative management, we have none. We're at the city, uh, council communication. Let's start with Councilman Bellinger.
Um, I really don't have anything. I got, um, most of what I was looking for with the wastewater treatment questions that I had, so I think I'm good at this point.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Uh, we had a very, another very successful sellout fireworks year at the booth for the Escalon Parks Foundation. It was, uh, very telling to me, the number of people that were there specifically supporting a skate park. So that continues to be on the forefront, uh, as far as I'm concerned. There's a number of people that, within the community, that are spending their own money on it and they are donating to that endeavor. So, uh, I think, um, with the completion of the bathrooms and overflow parking out there, we are on number, item number three, based on a survey, and that is the skate park. So I'm gonna continue to try and bring that forward, uh, to where we can get some recreation money, uh, leverage our own, uh, recreation fund with money raised by the Parks Foundation to have this skate park built. So, uh, as we move forward this year, I'd like to continue to talk about that and figure out how we're gonna coordinate with Park Foundation and figure out where we can, uh, best utilize their resources to, to bring this to completion, so. Uh, but you can't work in that booth and not, uh, realize that there's a need out there and, uh, listen to the kids, uh, asking for this project. And they're tired of having to drive to all the other jurisdictions around us to find a place to skate. So, uh, it's something that is wanted and needed in the community, so that's why I think it's so important. Uh, other than that, uh, that First Street corridor there has been a, uh, major issue for years. There was, uh, some funding available several years ago to redo that corridor and all the businesses there were unhappy with the design because it took away parking. So, we continue to look for ways to, to resolve the parking issue down there. Uh, it's always seems like it's been good neighbors. You know, everyone gets along and when everyone's getting along, it works out okay, but if something changes or, you know, they're, they're needing the parking spaces back, then, then we have problems. So it would be nice to come up with a more permanent solution over there. And I, my understanding too was that, that parking area with Prospect was supposed to be available kind of after hours. Uh, and available, you know, after five o'clock for, I didn't think there were any kind of time restrictions on that to one or two hours like that. Um, especially, we had looked at that as downtown events. I think the, uh, Portuguese Hall has worked out some arrangements with, uh, the property owner, but certainly seems like we should take a look at that and see what the restrictions are and if we can maybe negotiate a longer period or some off-hours, uh.
I think, uh, is there, Dominique, do you recall, is there restricted in the hour? Well, there is. But it like till like ten P M. at night.
They said no overnighters is what I recall.
Yeah, no overnight. That was a direction.
That was the only restriction I remember.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah, no overnight, but.
So I don't know where the, the two-hour limitation came from, if that's during.
I think it was.
Time hours or.
It's part of the negotiations that occurred was figuring out the, the restrictions on there and the competing different interests. It incre- it increased the public parking available, especially for the customers. Of course, the concern is we don't, the concern is the businesses don't want employees taking, uh, customer spots in limited areas. So they don't want all-day parking of an employee in an time area that should go to a customer. The other was no overnight parking to make sure none of the nearby businesses that do, let's say, uh, car repairs and so forth, don't leave their cars there parked overnight, using that area as a overnight storage lot for some of the local businesses. Of course, part of this was negotiations because the property is not, was given to them and the new property owner is maintaining those spaces, which is a benefit because the city doesn't have to pay for it. So these were some of the items that were, um, considered during the, uh, discussions.
Okay, so it seems like as applied and as we move forward, there should be some room to talk with the property owner and see if any of, some of these restrictions might be tweaked. Whether it's maybe a limited number of parking spaces that have a two-hour limitation and then, you know, I, I can't imagine that they use all of those parking spots, spots during the day. Uh, and if they do or st- or if they're longer, um, you know, if their businesses are opened at six P M. or seven P M., it seems to me that maybe we can look at the number of spaces out there and adjust, you know, the restrictions to a, a limited number of them rather than the whole sixteen or seventeen.
How about working to it?
Well, I think the fact that, uh, there's a restriction on the parking is kind of odd, because I don't recall that during the negotiations, other than the fact it was no overnight parking. I don't know where this other stuff came from, because I didn't, no one ever brought it up during our discussion. Because I didn't, no one ever brought it up during our discussion?
Well, I think, I think part of it is the negotiations and to make sure that it's available for customers. You know, the, the objective is that it's for customers. So if you're, open that to all those businesses being able to allow their employees to park there, you have no customer parking. So that's, I think that's kind of where it narrows down to, is if you open it to all those businesses around there that there's, you can, employees can park there all day long, then you kind of eliminate the availability to customers.
Yeah.
For any of those.
And that parking lot is not just the customers for the new area.
Right.
That is actually allowing customers for the surrounding businesses that we've heard from today. So it actually is increasing parking for all of the neighbors, all of the businesses over there.
Well, I think there's a, I think there's a public benefit, and the whole purpose behind this was to, you know, we, we took what was designated as a street that was going to cost millions of dollars to turn into a street that nobody wanted. So we turned it into a, a, a finished parking area, you know, that you could actually use, and we didn't have to maintain it and build a street there. So the public benefit of having it there is great, but if it's so restrictive that those other businesses beyond that property can't use it for their customers, I think that's where we run afoul.
But I think that two-hour parking doesn't limit customers. I think that limits employees from parking there.
Well, it sounds like, you know, depending upon the amount of time that a customer is, is patronizing a business, you know, if it's a one-hour class or a two-hour class in the middle of the day, that, that may require some tweaking, if at all possible. But that, that's the type of discussion I'm talking about with the property owner. Here's a, here's an issue that's been raised. Are there some adjustments to those restrictions that might benefit the other businesses in the area?
Of course. I'll speak with staff regarding the continued underlying real issue, which is there's just always going to be a, a limited amount of parking for what's needed over there.
There, there's always been an unmet need for it there. And we've looked at the corner parcels and potentially turning those into parking areas. It's been somewhat cost prohibitive, I believe, has been the big issue. Now that you have people that are willing to sell the property, it may not be, you know, a feasible purchase for the city. But we still have the alleyways that we control. So maybe there's some way that those can be put to this type of use, you know, on a limited basis, particularly in that area, without opening up every alleyway in this, in the city, so. That's why you get the big bucks, right?
Yes, sir.
That, that needle.
Right.
So, that's all I got, thanks.
All right, well, that's a pretty clear message, just find a way to get some parking. All right, you finished?
I think so.
You got it, okay, let's go on here.
I had to drag it out a little bit.
That's okay, I thought it was done well. All right, I've got people complaining constantly about speeding on the highway by hulas and coming into town by the trailer park. They say when they're coming out of the trailer park, they feel threatened because of the speed. And I said, hey, it's a highway, it's not a town street, I don't know what control we have over it. Chief, what do you say?
That's, are you talking paddock?
I'm sorry?
The paddock driveway?
Yeah, yeah.
Several problems there, or size of the car, it does put you out against the limit line, which does speak, you know...
They're just saying speeding in particular in that area. Can we enforce speeding in that area?
We can.
Of course we can.
I didn't know, I thought that was a state highway, you couldn't do much. We can do something?
We're in California, we'll take care of it.
Okay, because I get it every morning. Either, one of the coffee two shops, either one, you're going to hear about it. So if we can do something, great. The other problem is on Brennan, which we already know about. And there's not much we can do on Brennan either, really, other than to sit up there and cite people, I guess. We can't even cite him on Brennan because, well, what's the speed limit on Brennan?
Depends on where you're at.
Thirty. Thirty? Well, I got news for you, there's nobody driving thirty on Brennan.
But then, yeah, it's an odd, what's that?
It's like a drag strip, I mean, I...
What's this?
You're crazy.
Okay, well, at any rate, we have issues. If we can somehow mitigate them, that would be wonderful. So just a heads up, because I get a daily dose of, why don't you do this and why don't you do that? So here's my dose, dose back to you. Why don't we? There it is. Do what we can.
Do what we know to.
Okay. What was the other one? Oh, the park feed update. Everything seems to be going smoothly with the park feed. It'll be a little different this year than past. We won't have the food booths like we used to. We'll have mobile eateries, which are known as trucks that feed people out of them. We have the music set up. They have the run. We're doing a run this year from a different group. It's going to be the assistant cross-country, country coach who will be doing it. And there'll be, what, three races, I think? And then two? And you can buy the T-shirt at the race. And we were lucky to have two really generous sponsors this year. One was Frank Roach, and the other one was Powell. Powell, Powell, first name. Huh? Yeah, no, Powell, it's American Crane, which is Keith Powell. They both donated sums of money that are very generous. And there's another one, it's California Trucking, I think, out of Stockton. They donated some money. I, I solicited other businesses, but didn't get much response. But at least we got those guys in there. We got some new music coming in this year. It's going to be mixed up a little bit. You got a little bit of bluegrass. You're going to have a Hispanic band play a little bit this year. You're going to have a Battle of the Bands this year. It's going to be kind of fun. A lot of people like to change the time. I like to change the time in August better than July, personally. There's less going on, and everybody's coming back to town. Something we should consider, maybe.
It's a six and seven?
Yes, and we don't compete with the fairs either, which is also another plus. So something to keep in mind. I don't know, we'll get some feedback from people, maybe, and some may like it, some may not like it.
I was happy to see an August date. As a studio owner, for the dance studio, it's much easier for us to work through an August date.
Oh, good to know. Well, thank you for the support. We'll just have to push that one along with the rest of them. We have the senior Miss and Miss this year, it's going to be Walt and Debbie Merkin. We have Miss Escalon coming up. We have five contestants. We have junior Miss and Miss, which seems to be an abundance of young little guys who are going to do that. The parade will be on Saturday at 10:30. I'm not sure if there's anything else I can think of. But anyway, we're back up and running, and it'll be kind of fun. It's been a year since we had, had one, and a lot of people are excited, and I hope it turns out to be successful. What else was there? Is there anything else I left out of here? I think that pretty much covers everything I have to say. Is there anything else before we close down tonight someone would like to say before we go? Staff, anybody? Okay, then guess what? We're done. Good night. There it is.
Pretty efficient there.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
But I do want to talk about funding and help.
Everybody wants speed bump.
Because we're going to end up right back with Modesto, Antica, and Series.
Is Justin in charge of...